Good evening. I'd like to welcome to Albany City Council Meeting, May 22, 2024. Wow, at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I'd be honored to ask Officer Bagley, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please take a seat.
Thank you, Officer.
Thank you, Officer Bagley. You have a roll call, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Councillors Newt, Novak.
Here.
Newton, Novak, Montague.
Here.
Kapsinski.
Here.
And Smith.
Here.
Five councillors present, Your Honor.
Councillor McGee has reported she's not feeling well this evening, so she will not be joining us. Thank you. Special presentation is item three on your agenda tonight. Albany Police Department Awards Presentation. Chief Marshall Harndon will be presenting the awards.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors and audience. We typically will do this during what's called Police Memorial Week, which falls on May 15. And just a little bit of history on that. Peace Officer Memorial Day is an annual observance of dates going back to 1962, when President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation designating May 15 as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week in which the date falls as Police Week, which was last week. According to the FBI, last year alone, 60 law enforcement officers were feloniously killed on the job. From 2021 to 2023, more officers were feloniously killed, 194, than any of the other consecutive three-year period in the last 20 years. Already this year, as of April 29, 19 law enforcement officers have been feloniously killed and another 21 have died in accidents on the job. So I want to start with just a moment of silence for those that we have lost. Thank you. All right, if I can invite Officer Trevor Eaton and Officer Justin Felty up, please. Officer Felty and Officer Eaton are going to receive a life-saving award. For my people, appreciate this is a very large font for me. And just in case enemies worried, there are police officers out on the street covering, so given that most of the department is here, which is a good sign. So on July 5, 2023, officers were dispatched to a local address for an agency assist call. Initially, it had been reported that a male at the location was in cardiac or respiratory arrest, that the male was not conscious and not breathing. It was further reported that it appears that the subject was obviously dead. Officer Trevor Eaton and Justin Felty responded and arrived prior to medics from the Albany Fire Department. As additional information was made known, it was discovered the male had actually choked on a piece of food and was subsequently not breathing and had gone unconscious. Officers Eaton and Felty immediately sprang into action. They discovered the male on the floor of the residence and immediately began performing CPR. Officer Eaton initially began providing chest compressions until he was relieved of this task by Officer Felty. Chest compression continued without stopping until medics from the Albany Fire Department arrived and took over advanced CPR. Medics detected the faint pulse and immediately transported the male to the Good Samaritan Regional Hospital in Corvallis. They engaged in CPR immediately, which lasted over two minutes until they were relieved by this task by our medics. Later in the shift, it was confirmed that the subject was still alive and was breathing on his own. Officer Trevor Eaton and Officer Justin Felty only had a moment to decide and act on a plan that undoubtedly saved this person's life. Their prompt response and quick thinking and teamwork were critical to saving a person's life in situations such as this where minutes and seconds are critical and can be the difference between life and death. Both officers certainly can be credited for saving this person's life by their actions. Should they have hesitated, I am certain that this situation would have been a different outcome. The actions of both officers demonstrated their professionalism and commitment to serving the citizens of Albany. Their actions demonstrated excellence through service and certainly made the difference in the life of this person and his family. So congratulations. Officer John Beckwith. Want to bring the boys up?
Sure.
Hi, guys. On July 7, 2023, officers were dispatched to the Pacific Overpass to investigate the report of a female hanging over the side of the bridge. It was reported that the involved female was leaning back and forth and did not look stable. Officer Beckwith was first on scene and requested other responding units expedite their response. While officers were en route, Officer Beckwith advised the female was back over the railing and safe. When Officer Beckwith arrived, he observed the subject was on the south side of the overpass, was on the outside of the railing, hanging from the metal vertical bars. He could only see half of her body as he exited the vehicle and ran over to her. He leaned over and grabbed her by her wrist and told her to put her foot on the ledge, which he did. He was able to pull her up and help her back over the railing. The female turned around, grabbed the top of the rail, put her foot over the ledge as though she was going to jump again. Officer Beckwith pulled her back once more. Officer Beckwith showed great empathy when conversing with the female. Based on Officer Beckwith's written report, his body and dash cam videos, and the female's statement that her intent was to commit suicide by hanging from the bridge, Officer Beckwith performed an active, distinctive, and successful lifesaving of another person. So congratulations. Officer Unrah. And that is officially how it's pronounced as I'm told.
Thank you.
Officer Melissa Unrah was the first to arrive on scene to the report of a female subject stabbing to herself with scissors and was going to jump off the bridge. When Officer Unrah arrived on scene, the female was straddling the railing of the bridge. Officer Unrah attempted to talk with the female to come off the ledge, but the female refused. She continued to talk with her until she could get close enough to the female to grab her arm and pull her to safety. Officer Unrah ensured that a safety plan was put in place prior to releasing the female back to her home. Based on her calm demeanor and quick actions, she no doubt saved this woman's life. Congratulations. Officer Paul Harris and Officer St. Pierre. Officer St. Pierre decided Hawaii was more important tonight, so we will give him a pass. But thank you. You weren't going to Hawaii, were you?
Well, I planned on it, but we decided we'll hold off till next year.
All right, good. On August 23, 2023, Officer St. Pierre and Officer Harris were dispatched to report of a male who had attempted to commit suicide. According to the call notes, the male had attempted to hang himself, and when he was located, he was unconscious. The officers immediately and directly responded code three to the residence. At the time Officer St. Pierre arrived first, he started performing CPR on the victim. Officer Harris arrived shortly thereafter and took over chest compressions. Officer St. Pierre obtained a CPR mask, then both officers worked together to continue CPR for several minutes. Officer St. Pierre did not stop performing rescue breathing until paramedics from the Albany Fire Department arrived and were able to take over. The male was transported to Albany General Hospital, where he was treated and stabilized. In these situations, every second is key to saving a human life. The quick response, preparation, and outstanding teamwork of both officers led to the victim surviving. For this exemplary service dedication commitment, they are deserving of a lifesaving award. Officer John Wymer, I saw you come in. This is Officer John Wymer. He has been awarded the Operations Division Employee of the Year. Officer Wymer played an integral part in many large cases during 2023. In addition to his willingness to help others and his positive attitude beyond positive attitude, he is a deserving recipient of this award. He was a primary investigator in a runaway juvenile case that gained national media attention. His investigation left no stone unturned, as he called anyone associated with the runaway and to gain leads as to his location. Officer Wymer played a key role in a large-scale search that involved multiple law enforcement agencies, and the juvenile was ultimately found and taken into safety. Officer Wymer was the first officer on scene to a domestic bounds call, a differcall. He encountered a male subject who was acting irrational and began stripping naked in the street. Officer Wymer was able to detain the subject and subsequently learned the subject had just committed a murder. Officer, on the differcall, Officer Wymer also worked a large-scale sex offense investigation where he did an outstanding job that led to serious criminal charges throughout, through the district attorney's office, as well as, on his spare time, volunteers for many of our special events, including our annual safety camp, where he led kids through interactive dance to teach them about how to safely cross the street, one of our well-watched TikTok videos. He has a passion for mentoring youth, and it shows in his outreach efforts throughout the community. He's a dependable team member, always willing to help others, and does so with a smile on his face. It's hard to have a negative attitude, or it is easy to have a negative attitude around his job due to what we see, but he has a happy-go-lucky nature. He has the ability to lift our spirits and is always a pleasure to work with. So congratulations. Detective Gabe Flores. Detective Flores consistently goes above and beyond in the performance of his duties as a detective and a Lynn County Regional SWAT operator. He balances his primary and collateral duties and training, including frequent call-outs and being a dedicated husband and father to five girls. What's oldest? He treats his colleagues and the public with respect and compassion, during his interactions with them, and maintains composure in all situations. Detective Flores has come to be a trusted member of the detective unit, both in his ability to manage and investigate cases and his willingness to listen and offer support to his colleagues on a personal level. For almost two years, Detective Flores has been working on a case involving improvised explosive device, it's been a long day, improvised explosive device that had been placed and detonated in several different public locations around Albany, some of which vehicles ran over and caused vehicle damage. The investigation encompassed five different police cases and required significant follow-up. Ultimately, corroborating DNA evidence was obtained connecting Detective Flores' prime suspect to the crimes, and Detective Flores took the male into custody, where he's currently lodged, facing 12 felony charges and three misdemeanor charges. Detective Flores also served as a case agent on a two-week murder trial and assisted the DAs with multiple requests and tasks throughout the course of the trial. Trial resulted in the suspect being convicted of multiple charges, including murder in the second degree. Additionally, Detective Flores was assigned to conduct a follow-up case involving a juvenile female regarding concerns that she'd possibly been trafficked and abused by an adult male. The female was initially resistant to participating in the investigation, and Detective Flores encountered an additional roadblock when the victim's attorney attempted to prevent him from communicating with her. Because of the victim's own extensive criminal history and her initial lack of willingness to speak openly with law enforcement, she could have easily been dismissed as non-credible or uncooperative. However, Detective Flores recognized that these are common characteristics of trafficking and child abuse victims, and he persisted with the investigation. After relentless efforts by Detective Flores to investigate the concern, the victim began to provide information about multiple adult men who had victimized her in multiple different jurisdictions. Through additional follow-up efforts, many of her disclosures were corroborated by other evidence obtained by Detective Flores. He coordinated with other law enforcement agencies, conducted multiple witness, victim, and suspect interviews, coordinated with all our local DAs, and authorized search warrants related to the case. Here's a feedback from one of our DDAs from Lynn County, who said that it was clear that during the meeting with the victim that she had become, she had come to trust and respect Detective Flores. Detective Flores' efforts in this case have resulted in the arrests of at least two adult men on sex crimes related to the juvenile victim, one male convicted and one still pending. More importantly, I believe his work has restored in this young woman a belief that she deserves to be safe and protected and that someone is willing to advocate for her justice on her behalf. I met this young lady. Detective Flores brought her to my office to meet Bentley, our wellness dog, and I'll always remember her cuddling up the dog on the floor and just to see her transformation was outstanding. So he is very well-deserving of the Support Services Employee of the Year. Mike Peasley. Hi, Mike.
Hi.
Mike Peasley is our Supervisor of the Year, and this is a special one. Mike has dedicated nearly 30 years of service to our department and our community and served as a supervisor to our records and property evidence divisions. In the last three years, he has also taken on our Communications Division, which tasked him with supervising 19 direct employees. That's a lot. You'll, councilpeople will hear about that one later. In addition to his role as Police Support Services Manager, Mike takes on many additional responsibilities, including the lead representative for ABD and Albany City Hall, which entails audits of warrants, missing persons, stolen entries, and ensuring that every employee is up to date on their certification. And if you don't get it done, he's on ya. Mike consistently displays many great qualities of being a supervisor, I would say many great qualities of being a leader. He will often sit in for dispatchers when they have appointments or other engagements so that other dispatchers are not forced in for overtime on their days off. He is considerate of employees' time off and understands that while overtime cannot be avoided, he absolutely does his part to help. He goes above and beyond, more than a supervisor should for his employees. He's invested in his employees and supports them in every aspect of their lives. When his employees approach him about wanting to promote or grow within the department, he gets excited for them and gives them solid advice on who to speak with and genuinely wants them to succeed. He's always maintained an open-door policy and is fair in his decisions. He makes sure to keep an open flow of communication between the three divisions, as well as to ensure that there is no conflict and things run smoothly. All of Mike's employees would agree that he never asks somebody to do a job that he's not willing to do himself. Everything from going to Cavanta, which is our destruction service with our property and evidence, to fingerprinting our core clients, to covering shifts and dispatch. He's knowledgeable in his position and those he oversees, and if he doesn't know the answer to your question, he always finds out. Mike takes on any task for any division within our department when asked, whether it be an IT issue, alarms, new hires, equipment for the building, a very important snack cabinet, not anymore though, not anymore. And let's not forget the outstanding job he's doing in serving on the APBA treasure for the last 12 years. He is very appreciated as a supervisor, friend, employee to everyone, is well-deserving of this award, and I'm really sad to see him go as he retires later in summer. So thank you. I think you should be very, very proud of the police employees you have. Whether you're being a gun or not, we're all part of the staff.
Great job, ladies and gentlemen. And we are very quite proud of our police department. I brag about you guys all the time to all the other mayors in the state of Oregon. So I'm honored to be the mayor of this city with such a fine police department. So thank you all for your service and thank your families for supporting you and your careers. Thank you. Yes. I know you don't want to stay for the rest of this, so enjoy your dinners this evening. Here you are.
I mean, either don't have one or have them on my.
Meet lovers again, huh? Thank you all for your patience, and that was a great ceremony, seeing our police, men and women, being recognized for their accomplishments and their service to the city of Albany. It's always a pleasure to recognize our men and women and the members of the families that support them. Next on tonight's agenda is a public hearing for utility rate adjustments for fiscal year 2024 and 2025. Directions are provided, so if you're free to testify, provided in the agenda. I declare the public hearing open at 6:22 PM. Does staff have a report?
Yes, Mayor, one second. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. I have an abridged version of the presentation that I gave in April. If anyone watching is interested in more detail on the funding of our three water utilities, I would recommend that they find the video online from the April 8, 2024 council work session. Tonight's presentation will not be as long or in-depth, but this is one of the most critical things we do in public works, describing for you and the public how we use the funds that we are entrusted with. So although part of me is sorry that this takes a long time, I'm going to go through it and answer any questions you have, because it's important that you feel confident that you know that we're working hard to be efficient and responsive with our funding. So we have this discussion with the council every year as a review of the funding of the three water utilities and a discussion of forecasted rate changes for the next fiscal year and the following five years. To begin with, I like to show this slide to demonstrate the most simple explanation of how the revenue works in the water utilities. Each of the water utilities operates as an enterprise fund, which means that the fund must pay for itself and only itself. At its most basic, the utility payments go to pay for the services that we provide to the community. The level of service we aim to achieve is defined by the council through strategic planning, policies, and goal-setting. So this takes the shape of acceptable levels of reliability, capacity, and efficient operation and maintenance of our systems. And while the three funds are all managed individually, in the water utilities, revenue always goes to one of three categories of expenditures. Our first obligation is to pay our debts, so first we allocate our revenue toward debt payment. Then we work to keep our existing systems functional, so the second thing we allocate our revenue toward is operations and maintenance costs. And then whatever funding we have remaining goes into our capital programs. And then whatever funding we have remaining goes into our capital programs. It's important to remember that if we find ourselves without enough funding to meet our capital needs and goals, then we have to find options to overcome that funding limitation, which might mean trying to raise additional revenue or deferring capital maintenance. And we can't defer capital maintenance in critical infrastructure like our water systems for very long without generating significant risk to the community's health and safety. So I'll talk briefly about each of these. In terms of debt, we try to accomplish our work without taking on additional debt, but sometimes the needs in our systems are beyond our ability to pay for as we go, and we have to seek other options. Anytime we have a need that exceeds our ability to pay, we try to find the least-cost solution. In some cases, we can break expensive projects up into phases that we can accomplish over time, but that only works with projects that can be phased, and when we have multiple years to complete the whole project. An example of that would be replacing the Cox Creek Interceptor, which you've heard about many times, and is a multi-phase project that probably will take at least eight years to fully complete, and we're planning to construct Phase III this summer. When we can't find a solution that allows us to get work done within our standard revenue sources, we work with finance and other partners to find the best option with the least impact to our ratepayers. For those projects, what has typically happened is we've either issued bonds or applied for low-interest loans through one of the state revolving loan funds. We currently have three sources of debt in the water utilities. In the sewer fund, we have two loans. The first is the loan that was taken out to fund the construction of the Albany-Millersburg Water Reclamation Facility and Talking Water Gardens. That loan was refinanced a few years ago to take advantage of better interest rates. The current annual debt payment for that loan is $4.64 million per year, and it will be paid off in 2032. Also in the sewer fund, we have another clean water SRF loan that we recently took out to construct the improvements to the Riverfront Interceptor, including a new lift station in Forest Main along Water Avenue. This project was completed in 2021. The annual debt payment for that loan is $617,000, and it will be paid off in 2041. In the water fund, we have an existing debt that was taken out in order to construct the Albany-Millersburg Water Treatment Plant and some other related facilities. That annual payment is $1.92 million, and it will be paid off in 2034. And in the stormwater fund, we don't have any debt. Once our payments for debt are considered, our next obligation is to pay for operations and maintenance. O&amp;M includes personnel, materials, capital maintenance, and regulatory requirements. Timely and sufficient investment in operational needs can save money in the long run by reducing the risk of system failure, emergency repair, or regulatory problems. We have literally thousands of assets in each of our water systems. You can see a short list of some of the key things here on this slide. Altogether, we have about 600 miles of main pipe with thousands of feet of service connection pipes in the ground. We have 21,000 water connections and 19,000 wastewater connections. We have almost 20 pumping facilities, whether those be water or sewer. We have thousands of manholes, catch basins, valves, hydrants, I could go on and on. That doesn't include the three separate treatment plants, each of which has its own set of hundreds or thousands of assets that all need to be inspected, maintained, or placed over time. And our water infrastructure systems are simultaneously aging and growing, so the costs just continue to go up. We strive to maintain these systems in the most efficient and proactive manner possible. In water and wastewater, we've developed effective maintenance programs for preventive and predictive maintenance as part of our asset management system, which is working well. Those two utilities have the advantage of having had years of steady investment through mature rate and SDC funding. The stormwater funding is very new, having only been implemented in 2018, and the SDC's just implemented this year. Because of that, we don't really have a preventive maintenance program in our stormwater system, and we remain highly reactive and vulnerable to failures. The final area of expenditures is capital spending. About 11 or 12 years ago, the council discussed with staff appropriate capital funding targets for water and sewer, and in more recent years, we discussed a very small capital funding target in stormwater, which funds the stormwater portion of street capital projects. What that refers to is the fact that whenever we do major street projects, we typically have to replace the stormwater infrastructure as well. Prior to the rate being implemented, the street fund had to pay for those stormwater improvements, and now with the rate being fully at its initial target, we're able to have the stormwater fund pay for the stormwater improvements, which is appropriate. When we develop our rate-revenue targets, we calculate how much funding we anticipate needing in the next year for debt, O&amp;M, and capital targets. In all of our utilities, one of our priorities is to identify and repair failing lines before they become emergencies. Prior to developing this method of funding capital projects, we had almost no routine investment in our wastewater collection system. And as a result, back then, we had major pipe failures that created sinkholes over sewer lines and affected service for customers multiple times every year. Those problems have virtually been eliminated because we target our capital funding in wastewater to our asset management pipe replacement program. Similarly, a targeted investment in water capital has helped decrease our water loss percentage to a single digits, which is the goal of all drinking water utilities. These capital targets also have to help fund other major capital needs in the water systems. For example, lift or pump station upgrades, large sewer interceptor or water transmission main projects, and facilities improvement projects at the treatment plants. While our emergency failures are largely under control, we have a very thin margin of balancing capital projects for major infrastructure versus routine pipe replacement. As an example, in fiscal years '21 through '23, because we had competing needs for capital funds in the sewer system, we took a calculated risk and deferred our annual wastewater collection system pipe replacement program and programmed that money towards the Cox Creek Interceptor. That resulted in emergency failures and repairs occurring for the first time in many years. And while we understood that we were risking the failure of those pipes, we needed to program that funding to try to get Phase II of the Cox Creek Interceptor constructed. Unfortunately, that risk did not pay off, and we had both the Cox Creek funding and had to dip into emergency reserves to fix the pipes. So in summary, our existing level of investment is achieving the goals in water and wastewater, but we have limits on our ability to fund major capital projects while simultaneously maintaining annual pipe replacement projects. That situation is exacerbated when we're not collecting adequate SDC revenue to pay for the SDC-eligible capital projects. Cox Creek is another example of that. The current phase of Cox Creek is eligible for at least 50% SDC funds because it addresses growth, and we have virtually no SDC funds directed at it because we don't have any available. So in other words, we have enough to pay for proactive and targeted pipe replacement and limited stormwater projects associated with street work, but we don't have enough funding to replace all of the 16 miles of failed stormwater pipe and simultaneously address major capital projects. So why do we look at rate adjustments? In Public Works, we look at our three water funds every year and compare our annual revenues and expenditures against our targets and analyze where we are and what, if any, rate increase we need to request in order to keep making progress towards our service goals. Typically, there are three major categories of reasons that would make a rate increase necessary. The first, of course, is inflation. Inflation affects both operating costs, where we see it in areas such as the increase in pricing consumable supplies, increase in cost of electricity, increase in cost of personnel, and then in capital costs, where we have price increases for materials such as pipe materials, contractor expenses, et cetera. Second, we have regulatory compliance needs that change over time. We just completed the first cycle of the stormwater MS4 permit in January or February of this year, and we've begun the work needed to renew our wastewater MPDS discharge permit, which will take several years and ultimately cost well over $100,000 just to do the work to get the permit renewed. Both of those processes require significant expenditures, and similarly, drinking water regulations often require us to conduct increasing number of sampling and monitoring events. The last need, of course, is capital projects. As I just described, there's a long list of capital needs in our utilities, and part of our responsible management of our infrastructure is to plan for timely capital work to repair, replace, and expand our systems as necessary. Based on the budget forecast for next year, we are recommending a 2% rate increase in sewer, a 4% increase in water, and a 6%, excuse me, increase in stormwater. The sewer rate increase primarily responds just to inflation. In the past, we also had to raise the sewer rate to assist in paying debt payments when we did not have adequate SDC revenue to pay for the SDC portion of debt payment. We do have adequate revenue this year, so that helped us keep the sewer rate increase And I lost my track. The water rate increase is also responding to inflation. It's slightly higher than sewer because several years ago, we adjusted with council our capital rate target, so the 4% is helping us get to our annual capital target for water revenue. The stormwater increase is an inflationary component, and most importantly, it keeps the city on track to implement our permit requirements and begin paying for capital work on the street system. Because our funding for stormwater in Albany is so new, the fund itself is comparatively small, so even though the percentage is higher than the other two utilities, you'll see in just a second that the actual dollar amount is lower. This slide shows what a single-dwelling-unit residential customer who uses eight units of water a month with a typical stormwater charge would pay. You can see the amount per month and per day for each utility, and here you can note that the stormwater increase is largest by percentage but the smallest in actual dollars. The other thing I'll note on this slide, as I do every year, is that we use eight units of water because that's the common measurement across the state, so we can compare ourselves with other jurisdictions. But typical residential water use in Albany is closer to six units of water, so the less water you use, the lower your water and sewer bills will be. This slide shows the combined effect of all rate increases. We show this slide to demonstrate the total impact. However, it's important to note that they go into effect at various times. All three increases will not be in effect until the last one is in place, which would be the stormwater rate, which goes in March 1 of 2025. The combined increase would make this typical residential bill $148.98 per month, or $4.97 per day, which represents a combined 3.3% increase over the current rates. And I'll just note that the current CPI for the West Region is 3.7%, so we're right there in line with overall regional inflation rates. This slide adds in the city services fee at the council's request, so that you can see everything that appears on the city utility bill for a customer that has all of the utility charges. The city services fee is set at $9 per month, and although we're showing it here, just note that $0 of the city services fee comes to the Public Works Department, but it does help show what the average residential customer will see. This is a comparison of Albany with other jurisdictions. The Albany number includes the rate increases that I'm discussing here. The other jurisdictions are their current rates, which we have no way of predicting how they might change their rates over the next year. Albany is seventh on this list for combined utility bills. Last year, we were one notch higher, so going in the right direction. And let's see, one more table. This table shows non-residential example bills. These are actual Albany utility customers that have been made anonymous, except City Hall, and it shows the bill each customer pays in Albany with these rate increases and compares that to their rates in Salem, Corvallis, or Eugene at their current rates. If you're not familiar with our rate structures, we charge different rates for residential versus commercial-industrial customers. Commercial and industrial customers are further broken down into categories depending on their actual business operations, so there are varying rates even within the groups in our rate resolutions. For instance, a gas station would have a different classification than a manufacturing facility and therefore would pay a different charge. In many ways, the non-residential rates are much more specific and tailored to the actual use of the facility, but this complexity makes it difficult to describe an average utility bill for non-residential customers because they tend to be very unique within their own customer class. Okay, last set of slides. In Public Works, we keep a five-year forecast for all of our utilities. We use this information to plan future work in operations and in our capital budgets. Of course, forecasting is not an exact science, and generally speaking, the further out you go, the less accurate you will be with your forecast because it relies on very -- several variables that we don't really have really good ways of predicting over time. So we make our best educated guess and update this every year. The five-year sewer rate forecast, I mean, you see the previous three years are on the left. This time last year, we had predicted another 3% sewer rate increase for fiscal year '24, '25. We've revised that to 2% based on where we actually are. We're forecasting 3% for next fiscal year '25, '26, and then 4% in the out-years, of course. It gets very shaky as you get out there, so those will be updated every year. Water rates, similarly, you have the last three years on the left. Again, last year, we had predicted we would need a 5% increase this year. We've reduced that to 4% based on our actuals, and in future years, next year, next year being '25, '26, 4% looks like it would hold true, and then after that, we've programmed 5% increases. And then stormwater, this table always is just so shocking, but council will remember that we implemented 17% per year increases when the fee was first started. We completed that in the current fiscal year, and we've revised those down to 6%. Again, this one is the least predictable because we do need to come up with a better capital target so we can start working on proactive pipe replacement in stormwater. Okay, so in summary, what we are requesting is 2% increase in sewer. That rate goes into effect July 1. 4% increase for water rates, that will go into effect January 1, and 6% for stormwater, which will go into effect March 1. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Constable Novak?
It's not a question so much as a comment. I appreciate your work. I just, I see you're hiring more stormwater maintenance staff. We have rising rates forecasted.
Excuse me, I have to close the council, I have to close the public hearing before we discuss. I'm sorry about that. That's procedural. That's my fault. So I'm coming back to you. I have to close the public hearing.
Go ahead.
Okay. There was no written material submitted for the deadline, before the deadline. I want to call on those registered to speak. Gabe, is anyone registered to speak?
No.
The ones registered to speak. Either care of the public hearing closed at 6:45 PM. Now, Constable Novak.
All right. Try again. So rates are scheduled to increase every year, and we're hiring more stormwater maintenance staff, but still, you say But still, you say frequent street flooding, sinkholes, and property damage should be anticipated. It's a little bit discouraging.
Well, as I mentioned, we do not have capital funding included in the stormwater rate. It's the lowest of the rates. And in water and sewer, we have an annual capital target of, I think, $2.7 to $3-ish million per year per utility. We have $400,000 per year in stormwater, which barely covers the projects associated with street projects. So we don't have any capital funding in the stormwater fund to proactively replace the pipes. And we know we have over 16 miles of failed pipe in the stormwater system. So the city has chosen, over the years, not to invest in stormwater maintenance, essentially. It, we just, it's a choice that the council can make and has made. So when we come to the council next year, we will be bringing a proposed capital target. Probably not as much as water and sewer because that would be shocking to the stormwater customers. But in order to make progress on things like replacing failed pipes, when pipe, stormwater pipes fail, stormwater can't drain and streets flood. So we need to replace those pipes to help reduce street flooding. We need to oversize the pipes that are too small. When pot, stormwater pipes fail, oftentimes the soil that's above the pipe and below the road excavates into the pipe, and the road fails. So in order to prevent that, we have to replace that pipe. We have no money to replace those pipes.
So that begs the question, at least to my mind, why is this not in our budget?
Well, when we first proposed the stormwater utility, the council at that time wanted to implement as low a stormwater rate as possible in order to minimize the impact to customers and ramp that up over time. So that's what we did. We ramped up the stormwater rate over the first five years, specifically only to raise enough money to meet regulatory and very basic O and M activities. So the very first stormwater target was something like $1.7 million per year. It was very low. So that ramp, rate ramped up over five years. We've accomplished that now. Now we need to look at the stormwater master plan, which was recently completed, and the other capital needs we know about in the system, and come to the council and propose, as part of the next biennial budget, a stormwater capital program. And that will include a rate increase that will have this amount here plus additional amount in the rate that will go directly to capital projects.
And personnel costs are still the number one driver?
Well, first, yeah, I mean, people are expensive. I'd have to look, right now, in stormwater, yes, because we don't have a capital program. Our stormwater program, we have, I think right now, we have two FTE that are paid out of the stormwater fund. I mean, it's, there's practically no one in the stormwater utility. That's why in the memo, it says we need to add another person because our stormwater assets are increasing. All of the roadside planters, vegetated stormwater facilities have to be maintained. We have hundreds of them. So we use a full-time employee and we pay some contractors to help us because it's less expensive. We're to the point where we need to add another person. So that's what that will go to. We also will need to add equipment. Stormwater essentially borrows the wastewater collection system equipment and then reimburses them for fuel and whatnot. Stormwater needs its own equipment that will also cost money. So the stormwater fund is very, very small. It was intentionally started very small. The council wanted to keep it small so as not to...
When was that, Director?
When? The first stormwater charge went into effect in 2017, 18, 2018? 17, Jeff Babbitt says. So it went in March 1st, 2017. So that, that will be part of future council discussions is, how much capital investment can we afford to make? What impact does it have on our customers, et cetera?
You know, the council have anything? Counselor Kopczynski?
Just a, just a comment also. City growth will be factoring into all of this because that would require more infrastructure to main, and to implement and maintain the growth that is happening.
Sure, yeah. And a lot of the new residential subdivisions have stormwater facilities that the city is required to take over and maintain. So again, that gets back into the maintenance staff. We have to have people to maintain those large neighborhood-sized facilities.
Counselor Smith?
Want to refer back to the chart. It's in our, it's in our packet. The list of cities and the various charges. And our, our role is number seven on that list. If you look at just the position on the list, it looks, it's humbling. If you compare the dollar amounts of the monthly rates, average monthly rates, we're very, very close. All of those cities are very, very close to charging the same amount of money. And it's a lot of money. When I first moved here, it was a, we were charged every other month. It was about the cost of going out to lunch. And that's going out to lunch in $1980, not what it's cost today. I called it a throwaway bill because it was $15 for two months of water service. Water, yeah. It was not a lot of money. Since then, we've built the waste, or the water reclamation facility. We've built a second water treatment plant. We've started a stormwater program. We have to maintain all of those facilities. That costs money. People do the work to keep those facilities going. People do the work to keep the water clean. It falls from the sky. It, fish swim in it, so on and so forth. It's not cheap. But it's, but we're on a par with most of the other cities in Western Oregon. And we're all, we're all dealing with the same regulatory issues. We're all dealing with the same pool of people who are competing for good jobs with good pay to do good work. And it's just something we have to pay for. And the people who use those benefit from those services have to pay their share.
Does the council have anything? Thank you, thank you, Counselor. So, do I have a motion? There's a resolution on page 16.
Move to adopt the resolution on page 16. Resolution setting rates for wastewater system use and repealing resolution number 7193.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Now the motion passes. Thank you. Resolution number two, setting the rates for water use. Are we going to go to something new now? Or are we going to go?
Nope.
Okay, go now. On page 25 of your packet.
I'll move to adopt the resolution on page 25. Resolution setting rates for water use and repealing resolution 7194.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Say no. Motion passes. Thank you, Director.
One more.
Wait, there's three, oh, it's four. We did three.
No, you did two.
There's one on page.
You have to stormwater.
Resolution, okay. So next, we have another one is the resolution stating, setting rates for stormwater management services. There's a resolution on page 29.
Move to adopt the resolution on page 29. Resolution setting rates for stormwater management services and repealing resolutions number 7195.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Council.
Next on the agenda is business from the public. Has anyone signed up or registered for business from the public? Nothing? I did not receive anything via email today at all. Would, would anyone in chambers like to speak to the council? Would anyone in chambers like to speak to the council?
Yeah, John Pitch. I live in North Albany.
Nice to meet you, sir.
And I live on Squire Street. And it, it's the feed-through street for the Horton development there at the end with that 280 houses you put in. We've got traffic problems in there. I've been here before. People go down that street like a shotgun alley, you know? It's not a freeway. It's 25 miles an hour. I haven't seen a police officer out there. No one I know has seen a police officer on that street with an actual police car, not a service car. And I'm wondering if we're going to do anything about it or just leave it go? Because I got some plans to do something about it if you don't.
So we'll, we'll address it during, there is plans. And things are in motion. There are plans and things are in motion. It just takes time to get them set up. But we do, we are aware of the speeding out in that area. And so during the business from the council, we'll be able to address that unless the city manager has something.
No, Mr. Mayor, as you said, it'll be appropriately addressed during, under business from the council.
So we'll be able to respond to you under business from the council.
The only thing I got out of your man there is that they, he wanted me to collect petition from my, by my neighborhood to pay for, us to pay for the street bumps in there, you know? And that's not what it's all about. I mean, we've got a police department. You're supposed to be protecting the people of North Albany. But those on Squire Street aren't being protected. It's bad enough that the county doesn't paint the lines every three years. And the people that walk on that street are quite a few with kids. And it's quite hazardous.
Thank you, sir. But we'll be discussing it during business from the council.
Okay.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is first reading of an ordinances. Parks Tree Code ordinances, J sharp, page 34 to 41 in your packet. Would the city, let me go ahead and get started. Yeah, would the city attorney please read the ordinance in title only? Because we've seen this Monday, correct? Is the same thing we saw Monday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure you weren't going to make a, didn't have a presentation tonight, so, okay. An ordinance admitting Albany Municipal Code AMC 7.98 to increase number of protected trees and prohibit activities that could harm protected trees.
Would the council like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time in title only?
I move we read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance for the first, the second time in title only?
An ordinance admitting Albany Municipal Code AMC 7.98 to increase number of protected trees and prohibit activities that could harm protected trees.
So, any discussion, Council? Thank you very much. Would the council like a mission, make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I move we adopt the ordinance.
One second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. That one passes. The second, oh, there's no second one on here now.
There is.
No, the second one, increase the number of protected trees and prohibit activities.
On page 39.
Page 39? Well, I got to cross out on mine.
Yeah, for the develop, the Development Code, the planning department actually has to bring that to you.
So that's why it's crossed off, correct? Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Your presentation was great the other day, by the way.
Thank you very much. Thanks. I got him out of my car if you guys want to see him again.
We can make a cutting board out of one of those. So next, item seven on your agenda is contract for the building permitting software system. Shawn Park, page 42 to 43 in your packet. Is he here? Oh, there he is.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselor.
Good evening.
We're here this evening seeking approval to enter into a five-year contract with Essella for a building and permitting system with the option to extend an additional five years. And I'm here happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Please.
I know that this is probably not a very easy project, so I just wanted to wish you good luck in implementing that.
I do appreciate that, Counselor. It won't be easy. It'll be at least a one-day, one-year to two-year project.
Two-year project? So I hate these kind of projects. Before my life in insurance, I was a project manager by trade. And we did a rollout of a company called Soft Tech. They're no longer here. But it was the worst job project ever worked on. We got it done, but it was mind-boggling.
Are they no longer there because of that project?
No. No, we were buying from them. No, it's just, it was just too, it was too complicated for the users that we needed. So, Counselor, do we have a motion? Oh, please, another question from mouth. Counselor Smith?
Could you explain how this is different from the annual contracts that we've had with Essella up to this point? This is a change in the whole, the guts of it.
Yes, this is, historically, we've, since 2013, we've had an Essella on-premises system that City IT has administered and supported. The vendor, Essella, informed us last summer that that on-prem system would no longer be supported as of next July. And that does not leave us a lot of time to, to move. However, they come to you with the offer of reduced pricing if you will adopt their cloud system at a significantly higher cost, but leaving us only one option.
Our building permitting and planning and all of that stuff is heavily dependent on this system.
It is, yeah. It, it's across several departments in the city heavily use the system.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Do you have a motion?
I move we approve a five-year contract with Essella, Inc. with the option for one five-year extension to be paid in five annual installments.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. I award a contract for ST-23-01, 01, Washington Street Area Improvements. Engineer Stacy Bel Castro, page 44 to 47 in your packet. And that's, she's not here today.
Yes.
Please introduce yourself.
Carlberg, one of Stacy's staff in the engineering department, Public Works Engineering. On May 8th, bids were opened for ST-23-01, Washington Street Area Improvements. The low bidder was Pacific Excavation out of Eugene. The scope of this project includes asphalt grind and inlay resulting in a new pavement surface along Washington Street, all the way from First Avenue all the way to Pacific Boulevard. Curb ramps and some limited sidewalk sections will also be replaced along this corridor. There will also be extensive pipe replacement in the area, about 9,000 feet of water line, as well as several hundred feet of storm drain pipes. Staff recommends council award a contract in the amount of $3,504,650 to Pacific Excavation out of Eugene, Oregon for construction of this project.
Any questions?
Just, just a comment on both of these. People are, you know, obviously talking to us about repairing streets, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, this just shows in spades what cost is to do a street. It is not cheap any way, shape, or form, even with the lowest bid.
Yeah, and a lot of this is a water line proportion of as well, but, yeah.
So one of the things I explain to a lot of people is that, they say, why does it take so long? I said, well, if you rip up that $3 million street, we have to check the pipes before we put them back. And they're like, oh, I didn't think about that because those old pipes blow out, we're going to have to rip that street right back up and spend another $3 million putting it back. So I'm glad you guys are doing it, that, that approach. That's fantastic.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Counsel? Counselor Smith?
It seems like we just did this work. And that shows how quickly time flies because Washington Street was completely rebuilt like this. Anybody else remember 20, 25 years ago? And things were out. So I'm, I'm pleased with, with the low bid also.
Yes, so.
But I just wanted to comment, it just, it just... But I just wanted to comment, it just, it just seems like it just happened, but it didn't.
Like, October would be 30 years for me here in Albany. Right, it was, it's, I did, well, I remember driving on that fresh road, so.
It'll be nice again now.
Yep. Uh, item C would be awarded contract ST-24-01, Queen Avenue, uh, Highway 99E to Marion Street. Uh, yours, Mr. Berg, gonna speak to us on that?
Mayor.
Oh, we didn't vote yet? Yeah, I'm tired. Okay. So, I, do I have a motion on the item B?
I move that we award the contract in the amount of $3,504,650 to the low bidder, Pacific Excavation of Eugene, Oregon.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no, say no. Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you.
Resolution passes. Next one is awarded contract ST-24-01, uh, Queen Avenue, Highway 99E to Marion Street. Uh, pages 48 to 51 in your packet.
Right, good evening. I am not Stacy. I'm Chris Rukloski, one of Stacy's engineers again. Uh, staff is recommending that council award contract to the low bidder, North Saniam Paving Company of State and Oregon, for the Queen Avenue project. There were four bids submitted on this project ranging from $4,543,74 to a high bid of $4,739,819. The engineer's estimate was 4.9 million. Uh, the project overall includes about 2,700 linear feet of asphalt pavement rehabilitation on Queen Avenue from Highway 99E to Marion Street, uh, including storm drain replacements, new curb ramps, and sidewalk repairs. In addition to the street construction, approximately 2,300 feet of water line will be replaced, uh, as you mentioned, to avoid having to cut into the street in the future. Can answer any questions?
Counsel? Uh, do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
I move we award a contract in the amount of $4,543,74 to the low bidder, North Saniam Paving Company of State and Oregon.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D on the addition would be a supplemental agenda, if you guys have, everyone has it, is, uh, 7D is awarded a contract insurance agent of, of record. Holly Roten will be, is the memo's attached? I love this stuff.
And this is Holly Roten?
I am Holly Roten. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I am bringing this item forward, and Gina Jaeger was unable to make it this evening. She's out of town, our, our, and our finance manager is out of town, and our contracts and procurement officer is unavailable. So, you get me, I'm your fourth string for this item. Um, it does impact HR, so I'm happy to bring it forward. The, uh, city is requesting that the council, rather, I'm sorry, staff is requesting that the council award, uh, contract for insurance agent of record services for a five-year term to WHA Insurance. This would also include two optional one-year extensions. We went through a competitive request for proposals and received a, a number of very competitive proposals, I'm happy to say. Uh, we conducted interviews and evaluated those and determined that WHA was the vendor that would best suit our needs for the coming term. I did want to proactively address the discrepancy in the date. If anyone read the memo, you'll notice that our current contract expires June 30, but we're asking to award this new contract May 28. The reason for that is because, um, we're in the middle of a renewal. Mayor, you'll be familiar with this.
Yep.
And, uh, the current vendor has expressed concern about being asked to do all of the work associated with a renewal when we are not renewing with them in the new year. The new vendor has, um, come forward and said that they are capable and prepared of taking that renewal on for us, and we think that's in the best interest of the city long-term to have our new insurance agent prepare our renewal. In order to avoid this happening in the future, we, uh, the finance director and I have discussed moving back the end of the contract term to probably March 31st, so that we aren't in the middle of a changeover while we're trying to prepare our renewal. That can happen earlier in the year, and then the new agent of record can do the renewal in July when it's due.
That's a great practice. So, I'm, I love this insurance stuff, so I think I'm glad you guys are doing it the next time differently, moving it up earlier to soften that blow going forward. Counsel, do we have any questions? Have a motion?
I move we adopt the resolution awarding contract to Wilson Hiregood and Associates.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Say no. Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Motion passes, the resolution passes. Next is the adoption of the consent calendar, counsel.
Move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is the staff reports. A, item A is personal changes to the police department, Chief Harndon. Uh, actually, Director Roten's gonna speak with us about that on page 58 is the information.
Yes, thank you. I should have just stayed up here, I apologize. Uh, I, Chief Harndon is here if you have any specific questions for her, but, um, we discussed, I would go ahead and just present all of the personnel changes, since we have several. I did want to also, for the council's benefit, um, mention, we've heard some concerns registered about the number of personnel changes that have been brought forward to council for approval in the prior, you know, six, eight months. And part of that stems from transitioning from an annual budget, which the city was on for many years, to a biennial budget. Most of these changes would occur as part of the budget process in the past. And so, they would be captured in a lengthy budget document, they'd go through the budget committee, and then to council, and they would be approved just as part of our norm, excuse me, our normal course of business. We're a pretty dynamic organization, it can be really challenging to forecast out what your personnel needs are gonna be for a two-year period. And so, we're, we're now in our third biennial budget, and we're still kind of stumbling along, trying to figure out how best to do that. Sometimes things pop up related to retirements, which is the case with, uh, Chief Harndon's request. That was not necessarily anticipated within this biennium. Um, and then other things just become emerging needs, which is part of HR's request for personnel changes related to one of our positions being reclassified, and then adding a risk manager position. So I just wanted to address that proactively, and we've discussed as staff how we can maybe try to batch some of these, so that they're not coming to you piecemealed. Um, and we may, in the off-year of the budget build, do one presentation with personnel changes, uh, just to make it more succinct for council. So, um, Chief Harndon mentioned that our current support services manager in the police department is retiring. That was not necessarily expected, although we're very excited for him, it's, it's a huge loss to the city. Uh, there's a significant span of control issue within the current structure. This current support services manager has oversight over dispatch, property and evidence, and records. It's a lot of employees, it's a lot of liability. And our current manager is very uniquely qualified to take that on. He's a former dispatcher himself, and he maintained his certifications even after moving over to, as the record supervisor. So, uh, he's a bit of a unicorn, we've been very lucky to have him in that role the last few years, but we're, um, fairly confident we won't be able to replicate that experience, uh, going out for recruitment. So, uh, the first request that we're bringing forward is to split out the position back to two supervisors, which it was previously, um, before there were some budget constraints in 2021 that caused us to merge the two. And, um, Mayor, is it your preference that we go through each memo and have council approve them individually, or would you like to batch them?
I think we should, I think we should just go through each of them, because we're pretty, you're pretty good about getting through them pretty quickly, so.
Okay. So that's the first request, is to, um, break out those two positions, and that's in the council packet on page 58.
Counsel, do we have any questions for Director Roten? So, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the, um, reconfiguration of Mike Peasley's job.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. I've seen, I've known Mike Peasley for years. Our daughters went to grade school, all that, so he needs his rest, that's good, taking his vacation.
Yes.
Good. Uh, item Bravo is personnel changes to Human Resources Department. Director Roten, page 59 through 61 in your packet.
Yes, so, uh, this is a two-part request. We currently have, uh, an employee who serves as our human resources business partner. It's our senior-level position, uh, that works very closely with me on labor and employee relations, performance management consultations with supervisors, and just generally helps me manage the day-to-day workload of our department. It's a very high-volume department, um, we're a s, like, small but mighty team, is what we like to say. Um, there's a number of things that have added to that volume, including paid family medical leave, that's been fairly significant. And, uh, the ramp up in onboarding and offboarding we've had to do, as we've seen turnover related to, um, retirements, and just generally in response to employees, um, leaving. So, we are, we've done a very thorough evaluation of the needs of the department and determined that it would be appropriate to reclassify that position to an HR manager, so that they could provide day-to-day oversight for three of our four programs coordinators. Those, um, positions handle recruitment, um, benefits administration, leave administration, uh, just the, what we like to call sort of the bread and butter items of our department. It's where the bulk of the volume lives. Um, with currently supervising all of the employees in the department, it doesn't leave a lot of time for, um, mid and long-range projects, or focus, it doesn't allow me to focus on what the business needs are of the department. So this would free that, um, free up a bit of capacity for me to do that, um, which really, as your HR director, it's where you would want me to be focusing my time. Uh, the second part of our request that, um, is included as the second bullet on the memo is to add a risk manager position. This position has been identified in our CIS best practice assessment for at least 10 years as a need for a city of our size and complexity. Um, currently, we manage risk through a sort of band-aided effort between the finance department, the human resources department, our city emergency manager, safety officer, uh, as well as within each of the departments, there's usually someone designated to oversee the risk management efforts. Um, I won't say it's been unsuccessful, I think we've done a good job of managing it with the staff we have. Um, but we've really outgrown that model, we did a long time ago. Um, and the tipping point for us was this year, we received an over 20% renewal on our property casualty and general liability. And, um, the conversations began in earnest with the finance director and I about how are we going to surround this and address this. Um, we really need someone who can, um, bring the departments together, look at, um, programming that needs to be put into place, safety training, um, ensure that we have consistent policies and that they're being enforced, and that position as a risk manager would be tasked with doing that. They would be reporting directly to me and working very closely with me and the department heads on how we, um, surround this issue, and we have a number of programs that really are within, um, HR's realm that have just been languishing for lack of staff time, and so we would seek to clean a lot of that up.
Thank you, um, counsel.
Question. Um, $144,000 for the remainder of this biennium. What is it for the next biennium? Do I just double that?
Approximately, uh, the, it's effective August 1st, so there's a one month off a full fiscal year. But yes, that would be a, a close approximation.
Any other counsel? Counselor Montague? Nope. Um, so, do I have a motion?
I'll move to, um, approve the changes to the human resources staffing as requested.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you, Director.
I have one more for you.
Yes, you do.
Last but definitely not least.
So salary grade adjustments for city clerk. Uh, Director Roten will speak on page 62 as your packet.
So, our, uh, current city clerk has, uh, announced that she intends to retire, um, which is wonderful for her, maybe not so much for us. Um, but we took the opportunity in anticipation of needing to recruit to replace her to do a salary survey, to ensure that we are appropriately at market and can be competitive in that recruitment. The city clerk is a very unique position, there's not a lot of them in the state. Um, and we just want to be sure that, uh, when we go out to try to identify our ideal candidate, that we are attractive to them. So, this is to increase the pay range from N 130 to N 135, which is approximately 5%.
Any discussion?
When is she retiring?
Um, I don't have an official notice yet, but she's been pretty vocal. I don't think she'd mind me saying it's gonna be in early 2025.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
I know.
Congrats to her.
It's right around the corner.
Right.
On behalf of city clerks, um, I just want to say that I think most people have no idea what they do and why they are so important to making things run smoothly. There are the, um, there are parliamentarians, there are public, um, meetings, um, police. They take care of all the public notices for everything, they've, they know, they make sure everything is archived correctly, and believe me, that is so important. When you're trying to find something that you know you saw 20 years ago and you can't put your finger on it, they'll find it for you. They, they manage our, uh, our elections every two years, um, which is, can be a very big job. They do a lot of stuff that, no, that just, it, it's like walking on the carpet, and you know it's there, but you don't know how it got there, or how long it's gonna last, and, and if it wasn't there, you'd be miserable without it. It just wouldn't work without a city clerk, so I didn't mean for that to rhyme. I'm, I'm fully in favor of paying them enough money so that we can recruit somebody who knows what they're doing.
So, before we vote, I would like to share a story about our current city clerk. When I first, um, got elected mayor, I was in a coffee shop speaking with Sheila Escudero, um, before she started her covering city council. And right next to me was an older gentleman telling his nephew, in his 50s and 40s, about his grandfather being a former mayor of Albany, Oregon, Percy A. Young. And Percy A. Young was sworn in in January 3rd, 1921, and I was sworn in in January 4th, 2021, 100 years later. And I, I was ear hustling, because when he said that, I'm like, I turned and said, oh, by the way, and I told him who I was. And, um, I called Allison, and she sent me his first proclamation he had signed, and also his, the first agenda he had signed as mayor of Albany, Oregon. And the gentleman teared up, he was taken aback by it, so. So Allison is wonderful, and city clerks are historic, and they, they, they keep us honest. So I really appreciate her service in the city. With that, I will ask for a motion.
I move we approve the salary grade adjustment to the city and the city clerk reclassification.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is business from the council. I started on that side last time, I'll start over here this time. Counselor Novak?
Yeah, okay. Kinda hard to say this, but I really do feel at least a little bit compelled to say, you know, um, and I'm not begrudging staff anything, but I, I just need to speak out, because, um, whenever staff comes before us with a reclassification, a salary upgrade, additional staff needed with all of the accompanying benefits and entitlements and all this sort of thing, no one bats an eyelash, and it's just, of course, of course, of course. And then someone from the private sector comes before the council, and they get, if they're lucky, some nice words. And that's all. So, I just want to bring to your attention the fact that there are a number of people who live in this town who are not in the entitled class. And every time we raise the rate, it's giving them less disposable income. It's impacting them in ways that maybe it doesn't impact a person, well, for sure it doesn't impact a person who has PERS and other entitlements. I just, you know, you, it's really easy for people who are very well-set to do these things and say, it was a bargain, it's a great deal. I'm just speaking out on behalf of people for whom I'm just speaking out on behalf of people for whom every rate increase is actually felt. And every time, you know, we hire somebody new, they don't come cheaply, and everybody's, we all assent to the fact that, oh, yes, labor for government is expensive, labor for cities, municipalities, there, it's got to be competitive if we want to attract and retain. And maybe that's just the way it is, and there's nothing to be done, but, you know, the people who are on the hook for that, for when somebody serves their time and they're done, and now they get everything that they've got coming to them, it's just, it's really a different situation for people who, I don't know how to say it, just don't have the same entitlements. Every nickel, every, every time your bill goes up here, and then it goes up there, and six months later, this one goes up, and three months later, that one's going up, and you can look into the future and know that there, I do appreciate if it doesn't go up as much as you thought it would, I mean, I, that's a blessing, but, you know, just bear in mind, because it's so easy to automatically approve of every request. And, you know, I believe you, to a degree, when you say you're doing your best to cut costs and whatever, but at this, by the same token, it's all about attract and retain and got to be competitive, and it's like, there's just no, I've said it before, it's, I don't know how it's sustainable, I just don't. You're going to have more and more people in poverty. I dare say we have more people in poverty in Albany right now than we ever have before. And, again, forgive me, I'm not trying, I don't even know how to say it, I just, I just want to make you aware of the fact that these things that don't hurt some of you at all are actually hurting a percentage of the population in ways that you probably can't imagine. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Montague?
Yeah, I received the Gary Street sidewalk update, and I just wanted to appreciate staff for visiting with that neighborhood, listening to their concerns, and it looked like there was an adjustment made based on some of the concerns because we were able to make that adjustment. So it just is a really good example of the city listening to the citizens and making adjustments based on that feedback when we're able to do that. So I just wanted to point that out and really appreciate that we did that. And that's all I had.
Counselor Smith?
Counselor Montague speaks for me as well.
Counselor Newton?
I have two things. My first is, I had someone reach out to me after the Monday work session regarding the fish hooks, and they wanted to also bring to attention that Waverly Park has had the same issue with fish hook, they said they take their dog and walk there every single day, and they find at least two fish hooks and some entrails for fish, you know, left around the pond, and it's a hazard for dogs, and also probably little feet that are running around in the grass or, you know, on the trails. So wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and I think that we need to, I don't know, especially since I feel like angler season is just really starting with both the pond at Timberland and Waverly Park, that maybe we need to post additional signage or maybe have some additional presence just in the beginnings. The other item I wanted to bring up, I'm seeking some clarification. I had a constituent reach out to me concerned, they were wanting to add an additional habitable space and not have it classified as an accessory dwelling unit. And they said that the city staff had recommended entering into a deed covenant, and I wanted to see if possibly we could get some additional clarification in regards to this. And I did speak briefly with Matthew Rutgers. Matthew, would you be able to come up and give us some additional information?
The, there is a, to accommodate rentals or the future sale of somebody who wants to rent it. But as I understand it, if you're not willing to sign the deed and you're not willing to, then you must pay the SDCs. If you don't want to pay the SDCs, you can, you can opt out of it with the understanding that it's just going to be you using that, that ADU, and you're not going to be renting it and placing an extra burden on the system. And I think, yeah, Mr. Rutgers is here. If there's anything I've missed, he's welcome to comment further.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So Peter, you correctly responded to that question that, you know, there, there is basically just the two options, is, you know, as you're creating additional habitable space that's in a separate structure, it's either, you know, it's sometimes referred to as a, as an in-law suite. So we, generally, it's, you have to pay SDCs as if it were an S, as if it were an ADU. Sorry, can't talk tonight. So, but staff recognizing there are unique circumstances, we did came, come up with an option for folks that if they're willing to enter into a deed restriction, that they are basically guaranteeing that they're, they're going to use it as an in-law suite, it's not going to be rented out as an ADU, that they wouldn't have to pay the SDCs, that deed restriction is recorded with the property, it can be released at any time if they were to pay the SDCs or demolish the unit, which is highly unlikely, but not the demolition, not, not the paying of the SDCs, but, so it can be released if they were to pay the fee that everybody else would have to pay in order to make it an ADU. And the other thing the deed restriction does is, if they go to sell that property without a deed restriction, and we've run into this situation where someone purchases a property and there's, it's advertised to have an ADU in the back, well, that ADU was never, either never permitted or the SDCs were not paid for, and then they use, potentially use that, that listing as part of their financing packages, well, we'll rent out the ADU that's going to help us pay for the house. Turns out, it was never actually a created ADU. Well, now they're, they're stuck in this position of, we have to get it permitted, we have to pay the SDCs, which is not cheap, and so they're kind of stuck in this really hard position. So with the deed restriction, that shows up with the title report when the property is listed and before they purchase it, so they are made aware that this, the SDCs haven't been paid on this additional habitable space, it's truly just an in-law suite, similar to, if it were attached to the primary structure. So it's, very simply put, is that they have a couple options, one of them being to pay the SDCs, just like everybody else would for an ADU, or enter into a deed restriction that says that guarantees that they will not be using it as an accessory dwelling unit for rent. So I'm happy to answer any other questions.
So is there an appeal process to not have to pay the SDCs or to not have a restrictive, they're calling it a restrictive deed, what was it, deed covenant?
Deed restriction.
Deed restriction.
Is there an appeal process to that?
Yes.
The, the deed restriction is an option that, that staff has come up with to help in unique situations. So it's, it's not something that we are required to offer. The straightforward answer is you have to pay the SDCs, just like everybody else would. That's, that's standard. Now, council has the ability, and I can feel Chris Bailey's eyes burning in the back of my head as I say this. Council, council could potentially have the ability to waive an SDC, but that would be the first time it's ever been done, and those SDCs would still have to be paid, so council would then have to tell us out of which fund you'd like to pay those or where that, that money's going to be paid from. So it's, the deed restriction is an option, a creative solution that staff has come up with to, to be applied in unique situations. Otherwise, the straightforward answer is not, not do the project or pay the SDCs.
Okay.
And it sounds harsh, but.
No, I totally understand. I will forward you over an email I have, and maybe after a review, we can also discuss.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. That's all I have.
Counselor Kaptinski?
Yes, I've had a constituent contact me several times over excessive noise from exhaust cars racing over Lion Street Bridge that they're hearing over on Queen Street. It's enough to wake them up, et cetera, et cetera, and wondering what we can possibly do about that.
Wait, that's a long way.
Yes, it is.
Damn.
I just thought I'd bring it forward, I was just told.
Okay. Peter, will you address that?
We'll, we'll look into that. I'll, I'll do some research.
Queen Street to Lions. Wow. And so for me, I had a couple things. Counselor Novak, when you say entitlements, I'm not asking for discussion, just stating my, my statement. People work hard in this city to pay their bills, and I know there's people that are on the fringe and they're struggling, but they're not entitlements, they're earnings that they've earned, it's not entitlement, it's not, it's an at-low state, you're not given anything. You earn it, you pay your bills, you move forward. There are people that are struggling, trust me. I have thousands of clients that are struggling, not thousands, but I have clients that are struggling, and we do discuss these fees, and we have mechanisms set in place that let CSC for lower-income folks can get some relief. So, second thing is that I receive emails at my campaign site from constituents from all three wards and even outside the city, and what I do with those, just so you're aware, is I respond to them, I send a copy to the affected department and also the city manager so he has a copy for action. And so that's happening, it's been, been happening for a while now, just wanted to make sure you're aware that I do receive emails pertaining to the city, people complaining about something, people have an issue with something, from stalking to burglary to whatever, parking tickets, but I do forward those on to make sure that they get addressed by somebody in the staff. And I'll now turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. With regard to the gentleman who asked about Squire Street in North Albany and speed bumps, as you know, we are, I think what you were referring to, Mayor, is.
No, you dropped out. Mike died.
We are in the process of implementing an automated enforcement system, but the targeted areas for that are studied carefully to where they will return the best, the best return on that investment. Unfortunately, Squire Street is not one of those. He was also looking for the opportunity or the ability to install speed bumps, and he is correct in that the city does have a program for that. Director Bailey tells me that it would be a cost-share proposal with the, with the neighborhood, but that he would require 51% of the votes of the, of the neighbors to vote for that. You might understand that not everybody's in favor of, of speed bumps on their street. So if, if he wants to pursue that, Andrew Monaco would be the person to talk to in, in Public Works, and of course, he could reach out to me and I'd be happy to put him in touch with, with Andrew. And that, Mr. Mayor, is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, our next meeting will be Monday, June 10, 2024, at 4:00 p.m. for a work session. Wednesday, June 12, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. for a standard city council meeting, and I'll adjourn the meeting now.